Oh, I go to that green box, right?
Well, you go to, you can go get your mouse and screen up.
And then I'll go to that.
Right there.
I hit that, and then I'll hit the agenda, right?
Yep, so get that, comes up.
And then I gotta find the agenda. Why have it not be missing?
Oh, I don't have a picture.
Have what be missing, not be missing?
I mean, how do I like? Um, like, you know, so it's not showing all these.
There we are.
You close it out, but it's gonna, when you do that, it's gonna show everything that's on your, on your computer at the time. So if you don't want, but, because it's gonna give you anything that's like, it's gonna give you the option to share that.
Alright, so what I would need to do is just open up the agenda.
Yeah. You can share your own desktop too, but I guess it'll shake you, college is safer this, have the agenda open and just share that. I'm gonna send Jason back here, Nora, and he'll, he'll have to session out, because I, I wanna get some on my computer.
I know, you gotta do the other stuff.
Yeah, I'll make sure that broadcast goes out, and I'm mad at that machine.
Alright, thanks.
If you'll get that, Jason, be back here in a second.
Darlene, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I'd be glad to. Wanna stand up? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have some talking points here, I just wanna read through them, so we can get through this, um, this new meeting as efficiently as possible. I wanna thank everyone for their support of Guilford County Schools, and look forward to sharing the impact of this coronavirus pandemic on our school district, and how the legislature can help us during this challenge, these challenging times. We've all learned once again that public schools play a vital and irreplaceable role in our community, and it's a role that impacts every citizen in Guilford County. Uh, once again, public schools are leading the way as we undertake a massive shift in how learning takes place, while also mobilizing and coordinating community relief efforts. From food to childcare to instruction, giving kids access to the resources that they need to maintain a learning environment as much as possible. As of March 29th, our district, the largest, third largest in the state, and the 47th largest in the nation, is taking the lead in our community by preparing and distributing meals, so that students do not go hungry, coordinating with other health and human service agencies at dozens of mobile food sites, distributing laptops, expanding hotspots, and so much more. In addition to our teachers, principals, and other school personnel, our central office staff, the very ones that many say don't fill important roles, were key to making all of this happen. They have trained more than 6,000 teachers and teacher assistants in online learning, helped them to create compelling distance learning and enrichment opportunities for students, partnered with the Guilford Education Alliance and other community groups to mobilize laptops, donations, and food for hungry families, and opened three childcare centers for hospital workers in Greensboro and High Point. Today's agenda was sent out last week with a meeting invitation, and again yesterday with a reminder. It has also been posted on the Guilford County Schools website since last Friday. To max everyone's, maximize everyone's time, I think it's best if we hold our questions and comments until all of our COVID-19 legislative items have been presented. I also ask everyone to stay focused on these items again. We're happy to provide additional information on any other topics outside of this meeting. Um, and thank you so much in advance for your cooperation. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the Chair of the Legislative Committee, Ms. Darlene Garrett, to walk us through our agenda.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, and thank you, Dina. This is a new thing for us, and so I hope it goes well, I think it will. And I also want to especially thank Senator Gladys Robinson and her legislative assistant, Phyllis Cameron, for setting up the meeting today. Uh, do want you to know that it is being streamed live via GCS TV, and also our GCS website through YouTube. What we wanted to do, if you think we should continue, is have each person introduce themselves, and by stating your name, your title, and what district. So, um, who would like to start? We can just go around. Nora, I see your face there, so I'm gonna pick on you.
So, I'm Nora Carr, and I'm the Chief of Staff with Guilford County Schools.
Gladys?
Gladys Robinson, I represent District 28 in the North Carolina Senate.
Angie?
Hi, I'm Angie Henry, I'm the Chief Operating Officer with Guilford County Schools.
Linda?
Hi, I'm Linda Wellborn, Vice Chair of Guilford County School Board.
Winston?
I'm Winston McGregor, Board of Education at Large.
Jill?
I'm Jill Wilson, and I'm the LEA Council.
Michael Garrett?
Michael Garrett, District 27, North Carolina Senate.
Pricey?
Sorry about, Pricey Harrison, House District 61, thanks.
Uh, Linda, I don't think I got you, did I? Unmute?
Yes, you did get me, Vice Chair.
Okay, sorry about that. Let's see, who else do we have on, Amos?
Amos Quick, North Carolina State House, District 58.
Ashton?
Good morning, Ashton Clement, State Representative, House District 57.
Okay, um, am I missing anybody?
Yeah, same. Cecil Brockman, House District 60.
Oh, great, I hadn't seen your name up there, well, thank you, okay. Anybody else?
Hey Darlene, Pat Tillman here, District 3.
Of course, thank you, Pat. Thank you. What about Byron?
Kim Erby.
What, District 6, right?
Correct.
Okay, and anyone else?
Diane Bellamy, Small District 1, Guilford County School Board.
Alright, anybody else?
Yes, Byron Gladden, Guilford County School, District 7.
Thank you, Byron.
This is John Periclaw, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, John, we're glad to have you.
I'm sorry, my picture's not on, I don't look very well this morning.
Well, that's okay, we're just glad you're here with us, we appreciate it much.
John Periclaw, District 62, NC House.
Thank you.
Anita Sharp, School Board District 2.
Anyone else? Dr. Contreras, I know you gotta be there.
I'm here, good morning, everyone, Sharon Contreras, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you for all that you're doing for us, we really, really appreciate all of your hard work. So, um, as we've introduced everyone, um, we're just going to reintroduce our super superintendent, Sharon Contreras, and she's going to provide an overview of the district's most pressing concerns regarding COVID-19. She's joined by Henry, she's our Chief Financial Officer, and Whitney Oakley, who is our Chief Academic Officer, and as well as members of the Executive Leadership Team, I know I saw Tony Watlington in there. So, Dr. Contreras, we're gonna turn it over to you, and again, I wanna thank you for all that you and your team are doing. It's, um, it's quite a job, and we really do appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Garrett, and Chairwoman Hayes, and thank you to the entire delegation for all of your efforts to help the Guilford County community at this time. A special thank you goes out to Representative Clements and Representative Quick, who have been in contact with me nearly daily, trying to make sure that we can respond. I know the rest of you have been working as well diligently, but I've actually been speaking to those two representatives who are just making sure the legislation is headed in the right way, so I deeply appreciate your efforts. This morning, we plan on focusing on the impact of the coronavirus on GCS, and most importantly, on the more than 73,000 students that we serve. 22 million children across the United States rely on the free or reduced price lunch they receive at school, and every one of them is also eligible for free breakfast, and we've been serving that as well. And GCS, more than 65% of our students qualify for free or reduced price meals, a common indicator of poverty. Since last Monday, GCS has served more than 184,000 meals to children. Our dedicated school nutrition and transportation staff have been preparing and distributing these meals without protective covering, without masks, and without additional pay, while the vast majority of Americans are working from their homes. We asked the North Carolina General Assembly to immediately ensure the minimum of time and a half pay for all essential hourly employees. I fear that without this critical and immediate step, some employees will have to cease reporting to work. Consequently, Guilford County is facing the risk of massive child hunger. I also ask that from April 1st through April 30th, or, and as long as these individuals are working, that we make sure all of them are enrolled in the state healthcare system. We also ask the legislature to provide overtime pay bonuses or other incentives for mandatory part-time and full-time personnel needed to provide essential services such as daycare for school-aged children of hospital workers. With state testing and performance pay currently on hold for teachers and principals, we encourage the General Assembly to reallocate that money for, that has been budgeted for performance pay, to simply increasing the teacher and principal compensation statewide. We also ask the legislature to fund emergency leave requirements for all employees, regardless of the funding source, and encourage legislators to ensure public school employees have access to unemployment benefits and other emergency leave if school remains closed longer than anticipated. We also ask you to join us in advocating at the federal level for the same ability to offset additional expenses for emergency family and medical leave, and emergency paid sick leave as private and parochial schools, businesses, and other employers under the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Currently, schools are not included in that, that act for that particular provision. We doubt that most Americans realize that local governments, including public school districts, have received the mandate to provide federal emergency leave, a mandate we support, without complete federal funding to go with it. And we respectfully ask the legislature to provide funding for personal protective equipment for our frontline employees, including but not limited to childcare workers, custodians, school nurses, school nutrition workers, transportation workers, principals, and IT staff, who are ensuring that our students are well cared for during this pandemic. With respect to employee evaluations and contract renewals, we're asking the General Assembly for some relief from the required evaluation and notice cycle with, and to make certain that we have a way to continue the process with non-renewals for individuals who were not serving children well. All others, we believe that we should have a waiver so that we don't have to complete all of the evaluations this year. We also ask that the legislature allow non-mandatory staff to assist with calling families to make sure that the census is conducted as part of their duties. So while they are home, they can use district cell phones to make calls to our families and others throughout the county to make sure that we are encouraging families to complete the census. Priority two, I'll stop at priority one, which is around employees and compensation before I move to distance learning, to see if there are questions.
This, this is Senator Robinson, Superintendent, and thank you as well for all of the work. We kept up with everything that's going on, and know that y'all have been working hard, and we've been working across the county and state with both, so we really appreciate what you're doing. But I'm assuming that we'll get all of these in email, so we don't have to really take notes, is that right?
Yes, you will, we'll send the written document out.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
This is Winston, I have a question about the personal protective gear.
Yes.
So, so, and we can do this offline if needed, separate from the legislative ask, if there's a, who can tell me like how many masks we would need right now? Because we actually have a GCS parent who's sourcing them in the community for the hospitals, who has them available?
We, it is approximately 1,000 per day. That includes the principals, the IT staff, the transportation staff, and the food service workers. We have asked the county manager to include us in their orders as they are ordering for their law enforcement, their healthcare workers as well. They're having difficulty acquiring the mask, as is a problem all over the country. However, we are asking that as the state thinks about how they acquire the protective clothing and equipment that they also think about, or remember that there are school district employees who are providing the essential service of providing childcare and nutrition for students, and they need the mask as well, so that we're included in that order.
Okay, thank you.
Linda?
I just wanna reemphasize that I have worked with the childcare for the hospitals, and the hospitals do consider that a critical need as this ramps up. And because they are a high-risk population, those workers need to have that extra protection, even though we're making, we're checking temperatures and doing all that. I think it would give the employees a little more security, knowing that they have some protection. And so it is just critical to give them that security, and we are doing a very good job of trying to keep our population small. But, you know, to have some mask and different things would be critical, and right now they have nothing. As well as the pay, because there again, they are struggling to get people to fill in those slots. So, having that extra incentive to attend would be very helpful for us, thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, I'll move on to priority two, which is distance learning. In less than two weeks, GCS and other school districts statewide have flipped more than 385 years of public schooling by shifting to online learning. As we rush to prevent learning- As we rushed to prevent learning loss, K-12 through distance learning, the inequities in access quickly became apparent. More than 40,000 students have not signed on to the system yet, many because they do not have devices. In GCS, before the crisis, we only had 13,000 devices in the system for 73,000 students and teachers. That's 73,000 students, 5,000 teachers. We had none for teacher assistants. While we're incredibly proud of the work our teachers and instructional personnel have accomplished in such a short time, internet connectivity remains a huge challenge, even when there aren't devices at home. We ask the state to act rapidly to negotiate with telecommunications companies. This is being done across the United States to expand high-speed internet connection and provide at no charge or at a significantly reduced rate internet services to students who receive free or reduced-priced lunch. Then, please provide the funding to pay for that internet service for these students, ensuring that free and ensuring their free and appropriate public education. Please provide funding for public schools to expand student Wi-Fi and broadband access to the purchase of personal hotspots, although we have had great difficulty acquiring those at this point. Additionally, the North Carolina General Assembly can request that all public colleges and universities, which are currently not in session, those that have hotspots in their student housing facilities and student apartments can relocate the hotspots to the public housing developments in the urban areas across the state. This will not address the rural areas, but many, many students who are concentrated in housing developments do not have access to the internet, some because of non-payment, and the telecom companies are not turning their internet back on. So if the universities will allow us to redeploy those devices along with their outdoor hotspots to K-12 school parking lots so that students can access the internet in the school parking lot closest to their home, once North Carolina receives federal stimulus funding, they can replace the university hotspots that the colleges and universities provided to public housing developments and to public schools. Are there questions about internet connectivity or devices?
This is Senator Robinson, Superintendent. Just one or two things that I need to ask, have you received? I did talk to, I think, Councilwoman High Tower. She sent me some notes. And I sent her the flyer from Spectrum, which indicated, and the representative in this area indicated, that they had provided free internet for free and reduced lunch and low-income people who hadn't had it. And I had, so I need to know if you've been in touch with them, because that was a specific one, and she said they had done it. And if they haven't, we need to follow up. And the second request was about people who had not paid their bills to give some kind of waiver so that in those households with children and college students, they could get access. So have you heard from them at all, or do you know if that's available?
So with respect to Spectrum, this is a national program, so I don't think we're the most appropriate people to try to negotiate one-on-one with. But we have had dozens and dozens of calls from parents that this is not really a reduced-price service, that the advertising is different than what they are actually offering, that they are not turning, reconnecting individuals who have been disconnected for non-payment. So it is a problem for us. Again, we ask that the state negotiate a statewide fee and that the state pay that fee, because we owe students a free and appropriate education. I don't think every district should try to negotiate with telecom communications on their own.
Okay. Well, I agree with you, but you know, my responsibility is to look after this area in Guilford County, and that person is responsible for North Carolina and the area. So I'll follow up with them and then later on with you and the governor as well.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Are there other questions regarding this particular topic?
I have a question. This is Ashton Clemens. Dr. Contreras, you referenced that some other states were doing this statewide work. Could you, or could you just send me what those states are so we can propose some of those ideas as models? That would be helpful.
I can. And I can tell you there are districts who have negotiated. So for example, New Orleans was able to negotiate the first month, three and $10 for each additional month after the first month. But I know that there are statewide negotiations going on as we speak, and we can get that for you from the Council of Great City Schools.
That would be great. Thank you.
Amos?
Yes, Dr. Contreras, as you alluded to, since we are primarily an urban county, that having the colleges and universities participate would be a benefit. But there are rural parts of Guilford County. Would this hotspot expansion help the rural parts of our county?
It would help, not the taking the hotspots down from the public colleges and universities and putting it in the housing developments, but placing them in every school parking lot. The outdoor hotspots would assist those areas. We also received a $125,000 grant from Chiefs for Change, which is a national nonprofit organization for transforming public schools made up of state chiefs and superintendents. We are going to use that to put hotspots on school buses and park the school buses in some of the rural areas. But that means we do need public colleges and universities to loan us their hotspots that are, they have both indoor and outdoor hotspots. Those that are outdoor can go into our parking lots. Those that are indoor can go into the public housing developments across the state.
A follow-up question, and looking ahead, and forgive me for doing so. Once we make this, these opportunities available for our students, particularly our urban students, how do we keep this going after this pandemic is over?
Absolutely. So this must be addressed. This digital divide has always been a problem for, in public schools and for creating equity in terms of educational outcomes for students, particularly poor students, students of color. We have to have a federal initiative that is similar to what we did when we worked on electricity in the darkest parts of the country. That's what it's going to take to ensure equity. So I believe the governors have to be working together to implore the federal government to do something about this digital divide and to make the internet accessible to the entire country. I don't think you can solve it on your own, is what I'm saying. I don't see any more hands.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Pat.
I was just thinking, I read somewhere recently that auto dealerships, because they are hotspots typically, because they serve so many customers in some of these areas across the country, have offered up their facilities, their land for the use of hotspots. Is that something we could pursue?
I missed the first part. Who did this, Mr. Tillman?
Auto dealerships. Those dealerships that are obviously are vacant right now and not serving customers. I think South Carolina, there was a group of those auto dealerships that offered up their space, their facility, and parking lots for hotspots.
Toyota has done so here. However, I don't know if they got permission to do so from the county. So to open our parking lots at the school district, our attorney did get legal counsel from the county, the city of High Point, and the city of Greensboro. So although Toyota has done that here in Guilford County, I think they should seek the permission of the county before we can say to students, "Go out and park in Toyota's parking lot."
Okay. Yeah, I just was thinking, I didn't know that, but I know in South Carolina that they've done that, and they've gotten all the permissions, obviously, and checked all the legal boxes. But just a thought.
It's a good idea. I think we have to all sort of apply those sorts of ideas. We had one of our local McDonald's owners, who owns five, say that they would open the lobby for us to allow students to come in without serving food. And we asked, could we supervise it? Have fewer than 10 students in the space? Have our cleaning staff there to make sure we were disinfecting? But DHS is disallowing that. So people are trying to come up with creative ideas, but we've had difficulty actually trying to implement some of the ideas to get connectivity to students. Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Contreras. Thank you. With respect to the graduating seniors, given the disruption the pandemic is causing students, particularly our graduating seniors, we need to make certain that college acceptance letters to state university system schools and community colleges are honored and not rescinded. And we encourage the General Assembly and the State Board of Education to consider legislation and policies that ensure as smooth a transition as possible for our graduating seniors. So we are asking, I can't think of the name of the state that did this, but at least one state has already passed legislation that their public colleges and universities cannot rescind letters of acceptance for graduating seniors that have already received these letters. With respect to testing and accountability, we are so pleased that North Carolina's application for a waiver of federal testing accountability requirements for 2019-20 has been submitted and granted by the United States Department of Education. There are several state laws tied to the results of EOCs, EOGs that the legislature will need to address. We ask that the legislature return promotion and retention decisions to local school districts so that we can make certain all current third-grade students who are in good standing when school closure occurred are promoted to fourth grade. We also encourage the General Assembly to provide additional funding for appropriate screeners for all fourth graders to help educators identify and develop appropriate strategies to address students with potential deficits in reading, some that existed before the pandemic, some that were exacerbated because of the pandemic. We also will need funding for diagnostic assessments to further identify skill gaps for intervention purposes. And the biggest ask we have is that districts receive additional and flexible funding to provide comprehensive professional development for K-3 teachers in early literacy and to plan and provide appropriate summer school programming and extended learning program once the school year begins. So in the poor schools, for example, we may wish to extend the school year to start early to end later to whole Saturday school programs will need the funding to make up for this gap in education. With respect to advanced math placement, GCS leads the state in identifying and enrolling students of color and other underrepresented groups in gifted education and the most academically rigorous courses. That is a fact. That includes AP, IB, and dual enrollment courses. We ask the legislature for the flexibility to ensure that all student demographics are represented in advanced math and academics. Our concern is that by prescribing the method to determine the placement, the state might inadvertently disrupt this important equity work in GCS. So we want to make sure that the rules are not so prescribed that we no longer can do the equity work in terms of the criteria we use to ensure that all students have access to these high-level courses. For exceptional children, we know that compensatory services may be applicable following this online direct instruction for students in cases where students with disabilities were not provided the option to engage online or could not access distance learning successfully, even with supports and services. Distance learning and related services may not be feasible in all cases, specifically for medically fragile students and students with more profound disabilities. Funding for compensatory services owed should be made available by the General Assembly in these cases, and local school districts should not have to use current allocations to provide these compensatory services. Additional funding will also be required to support students who may not yet be identified as needing specially-designed instruction. The additional funding would provide supports, including remediation, online tutoring, and reading intervention opportunities for those who could not be identified as an exceptional child but are demonstrating the need for additional support. And by that, we mean we've had to stop the testing for EC programming because of the pandemic, but these students still need tutoring and other services. For career and technical education, we ask that students, particularly graduating seniors, that they are given waivers from various professional standards and licensing boards regarding professional and industry certification requirements and/or additional funding in time to fulfill those requirements following high school graduation. An example of this are the clinical hour requirements for certified nurse assistants. And while it is not coronavirus-related, we also ask you once again to advocate for the inclusion of the $1.5 million annually in the state budget for two years to support GCS's signature Career Academies, an economic and workforce development initiative that will be even more critical in the post-pandemic economy. In fact, had some of our programs been up and going and the facilities already being built or renovated, particularly along the lines of advanced manufacturing, we could be helping with the response. So those are the academic issues. Are there questions about those? I don't see any hands raised. Ashton?
Dr. Contreras, we've been asking about the exceptional children's issues that are coming up, and that, I don't, this might be Jill's question too, but we're getting that most of that is all unless the federal government makes the decision. Like, for an adaptive curriculum kit, for example, there's six and a half hours a day, which is just impossible in our current dynamic. But then they're accruing 40 hours a week of compensatory services time. But what we're hearing is that there's really not much at the state level we can do about that unless the federal government makes some changes. But I'm just wondering if you all have heard differently than that from somewhere?
So one of the things that we've been discussing among school board attorneys and others that the state can do is there's a difference between off-airing supplemental learning, like we're trying to do distance learning, and learning, like we're trying to do distance learning, and counting a school day. So it would not, you would not be accruing 40 hours of compensatory ed by what we're doing because we're not actually offering six and a half hours of instruction in every school to every student. So one of the things that the state should keep in mind with whatever they do is what they call these, the period of time from the 14th of March or whatever the first day was to the end of the year. If they consider those all school days, then there would be compensatory ed. But if they consider what we're doing, sort of supplemental education, things to keep things moving, then that would have a different, different outcome. So that's how you really are affecting compensatory ed rather than waiving it. And then I think the other important thing Dr. Contreras is talking about is making sure we have additional funding because regardless of what we call the time for March 14th or whatever the day was that we officially stopped having kids in buildings, to the end of the school year or till May 15th or whatever the ultimate day winds up being, the kids aren't getting services. So they're gonna need, you know, you're gonna have recapture, you're gonna need to have some much more intensive interventions to get kids back to where they ought to have been. So we're really talking about state funding and then being very careful about how you count the time missed.
Thank you.
There are also two groups made up of very large districts throughout the country that are working on recommendations, both the Council of Great City Schools and Chiefs for Change. I'm sure the National School Boards Association is also working on this. So we will be giving you updates as we work through this with them. We don't have all of the answers, but we are deeply committed to making sure these students are served. But you raise an interesting point. One thing we don't want to do is meticulously rebuild the same system that did not serve all students well. So we do have an opportunity here to do some things differently. And I've cautioned my colleagues as well, like, don't be in a rush just to go back and create the same system we have. This crisis is presenting some opportunities to serve students in different ways.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised. Okay.
Thank you. Onto student attendance. We ask the General Assembly to waive compulsory attendance laws and the issuance of mandatory letters for chronic absenteeism for 2019-20 only. However, we understand that this pandemic could cause school closures again in the fall. So we ask for regulatory relief and flexibility to be able to use e-learning rather than make-up days for school closures due to inclement weather, power outages, police actions, and other issues. This is allowable in Pennsylvania, South Carolina, Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, and we ask for this for the last couple of years with inclement weather days and once when we have the tornado. So I think now is the time to pass legislation allowing e-learning to take the place of the traditional make-up days. Yes.
My question is, do we have sufficient devices in place that this is something we can do? Or do we need more funding for devices?
Yes. So we absolutely need more funding, and I think that should be a stipulation of the regulation. But the states that allow this have tried to make certain that where they do it statewide, that there is a means for all students to participate, or some states allow this district by district when districts show that all students have access to the two devices. And for many of these states, they don't have internet connectivity either. So South Carolina is one of them. What they do, and this is what we're encouraging students when they go to our parking lots, is to download everything so that when you get home, you can do the work and then submit it once school is back in session. But we do need, I think, a one-to-one device initiative statewide. And not because of the pandemic.
Thank you. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank Winston for all the work that she has done helping us get devices in the hands of our students.
I just want to go, I see some questions.
I think I see Winston.
This is back to the connectivity issue that I didn't mention earlier at the state level. Verizon also has a data plan connectivity process which might benefit some students if the state were to talk to them. You know, they have a device that costs $20 a month. Now, I'm not saying families can leverage $20 a month who don't have connectivity. But with that, if you have a good data plan, again, that is an issue to be resolved. You can connect 15 devices to it. So you don't have to have Wi-Fi. You can use your data plan. And I'm just wondering if at the state level, we're doing some negotiating with Spectrum and others that we put the cell providers in the loop because that technology exists. It's a small disk. And they used to charge you for it. Now they're giving that away if you sign up for the $20 a month and you don't have to have Wi-Fi. So there might be something that we could negotiate that would be affordable or free or meet certain needs where Wi-Fi or connect, you know, isn't going to be the right solution.
Thank you. And again, I think some of these are immediate actions that will be helpful, but I implore the state to take, to negotiate or to take actions that will address this issue systemically. I just want to address Ms. Diane Bellamy Small. I think she can't speak in, so she's sending questions. She has a question about how we handle staff members who are medically at high risk. So I want to just remind everyone that these staff members have never been asked to come to work. They were allowed to stay home from the very first day, and they all received that communication. They're also being paid because of both state and federal legislation that were passed. So they are not at risk of not being paid. With respect to the childcare workers, only the childcare workers who wish to work are being asked to work. That is true of our custodians, IT staff, all the mandatory bus drivers, transportation staff. We ask for volunteers. So there is no one being forced to work. I'm going to move on to Health and Human Services. The coronavirus pandemic showed us once again how woefully inadequate our current student-to-school nurse ratios are. Given the complex health and medical needs of our 73,000 students from pre-kindergarten through grade 12, and knowing that this will still be a concern in the fall, we urge the General Assembly to provide full-time nurses for every school in North Carolina, beginning in the fall. In the state's largest school districts, many students live in shelters. We have five in Guilford County. They live in hotels, motels, temporary and transitional housing. Students in the five shelters are now disallowed by the shelters from attending the GCS childcare centers that the state went back and allowed us, gave us permission to open for homeless students. We ask that the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and/or the General Assembly require social workers and other trained educators, along with county nurses, to conduct wellness checks on these students in transition immediately. These are students in transition as defined by the McKinney-Vento Act. We have no access to these children. Similarly, minors in juvenile detention are also entitled to a free and appropriate education. We were told that we could not provide them with technology. They reversed that after a call from Representative Clement. However, we'd like to know which government body is making certain that these students have access to technology, both hardware and Wi-Fi, along with access to district teachers. I'm sure it's not lost on any of you that the vast majority of children in detention in Guilford County are male, and they are black and Latino. We also need expanded and coordinated services by Department of Health and Human Services to ensure that students in crisis do not fall through the cracks. So if we could just make sure as students are dealing with this additional trauma, that we are checking on families who are already in crisis so that no child is a victim of abuse during this period. Research and experience from past economic downturns, even without a major public health crisis, indicate that children and families will experience significant trauma. As hope decreases and despair and desperation increase for some, rates of domestic violence, crime, child abuse, hunger, homelessness, and other devastating childhood experiences increase dramatically. To address these issues, we encourage the General Assembly to increase allocations for social workers and to increase the Department of Health and Human Services resources for behavioral health clinicians, services, and programs. We urge you now to plan ahead of time to meet students' physical, social, and emotional health needs that will likely be exacerbated by this crisis. Services that should include counseling and wellness checks to ensure student safety and support. We also encourage the General Assembly to expand technology and Wi-Fi access to support telehealth initiatives that will increase student and family access to appropriate medical care while also ensuring that critical health information is shared with those directly involved in each student's development. With schools closed, students with significant disabilities and their families require an increase in the hours of service provided for in-home therapy and respite. Without an increase in hours, students with disabilities who normally receive these services at school are actually shortchanged, and the quality of life for the student and family can deteriorate rapidly. So again, make sure they have services provided for in-home therapies and respite. Fully fund cost associated with the provision of childcare services for school-aged children of hospital workers. Now, this one, the state gave $50 million to the districts. And we could use it for childcare, and we are. But that same money is also used for technology and academic needs. To my knowledge, the other school districts are not providing childcare. So it's creating an inequity because we decided that it was the right thing to provide this childcare for our hospital workers' children. We should not have to use that same pot of money to pay for childcare and the academic needs of our students and the technology needs of our students because we chose to do the right thing and help the hospitals and to make sure we have enough healthcare workers. This is a disincentive to other districts stepping up to open childcare centers for the children of healthcare workers if they have to use that money to fund the childcares that we open. So we ask for help with that. So any questions on Health and Human Services? We covered homelessness, students in JDC, wraparound services, wellness checks.
Would the school system be the best position to have a list of the McKinney-Vento children? If we were going to try, would the school be best positioned or without Department of Health to do those wellness checks?
We have a list of the homeless students.
Okay. And then just in my research about the juvenile detention, it sounds like about 60% of our kids in juvenile detention centers are in centers run by the state. Forty percent are run by county governments, which is what's happened in Guilford County, just as a point of reference. It sounds like at the state, there's some comprehensive plans for how they're making sure this is, but county run ones like we have, that's really, they don't have the discretion over them at the state level. So I just wanted to share that as part of the conversation.
I'd like to hear anybody advocate for these children. I hope that Guilford County will lead the way and our delegation will lead the way in advocating that these students receive a free and appropriate education.
Thank you. Linda?
I just want to reemphasize with our four special needs fully, you know, for our most vulnerable students, these parents that are now at home 24/7, many of them cannot get any extra help at this time. So it is definitely stressing their home environment. So getting that extra hours from Medicaid or whoever supports that extra help in home that we were providing is very critical to these parents. I mean, we're talking about people in crisis, just normal, that have healthy children at home, and how that impacts them. Now, put the extra burden of these severely high-needs children 24/7 at home, and some of them don't have the extra hours to extend care and get help that they need. I would put that at a very critical situation for those families. So I just want to make that extra comment. You know, I know a number of them that are struggling.
I don't see any other hands raised.
Finally, with the budget, public school employees are stepping up and taking leadership roles in responding to the public health crisis caused by the coronavirus. We ask that the General Assembly pass a state budget for the 1920 school year that provides a pay increase for all of the state's public school employees. Currently, our classified personnel are the only state employees who did not get a pay increase this fiscal year, even while they are the very ones serving on the front lines of the pandemic. This is unjust, and it must be addressed. Again, while we are proud that we opened three childcare centers for the children of our dedicated healthcare workers and for homeless students, we are being asked to pay for this out of the additional education funding that Governor Roy Cooper has allocated for school districts. It has created a huge inequity, and no other district will step forward to assist its county's hospitals if it requires making the difficult choice of using the limited funding for childcare to pay our employees and purchase technology for our students. Childcare must and should be allocated through a distinctly different funding source. Childcare is not the only pandemic expense, however. We have already spent more than $250,000 on soap and custodial supplies and services, and we're only in week two of the school closure. Sanitizing and securing buildings, expanding hotspots, purchasing devices, investing more in digital resources, training teachers in online learning, expanding remote work and meeting capabilities, crisis hotlines and call centers, printing public health as well as instructional materials for families to use at home, all represent unbudgeted costs. Lastly, it's vitally important that adequate representation of North Carolina's largest school district superintendents are included in decision-making as we move forward with the daunting challenge of rebuilding our state's education system. The issues facing the large districts are not identical to those facing suburban and rural districts. I know that Edna Wallace of RTI, who regularly convenes the state's largest 12 districts, is ready and willing to represent is ready and willing to represent the collective issues of the large districts and each of us are willing to serve. Thank you, and I'm willing to take any other questions that you might have.
Michael?
My question is, probably can't be answered right now. But first, I just want to say thank you to the superintendent and your team, the Board of Education, and all of the employees at Guilford County Schools. I cannot even begin to imagine what it's like to recreate public education in, for our community in a matter of days. And I know how painful this is for not just the employees, but our families and our students. My question is, and I know it's early, but all of the funding requests that I know you've mentioned you would request funding from the General Assembly for a myriad of things. Do you have ballpark figures on what those funding requests would actually be for more of the near-term issues so that when we go back April 28th or whatever date that is, we have an idea of those ballpark figures? Thank you.
So we do for some things, but some of it depends on how long we'll be out of school or if we'll be out of school in the fall. So we can give you ballpark figures on devices, for example. One thing I think that would be helpful as districts are making lots and lots of purchases is to make sure all school districts in North Carolina are temporarily granted tax-exempt status like all other school districts in the United States. With savings, if we buy a million dollars in computers, we could save, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in taxes and buy more devices for teachers and students. I think that's a quick win for everybody and will allow us to do more with the limited resources we have. So Senator Garrett, we will send you numbers on what we have, but some of it, quite frankly, it's going to be based on the amount of time that students are out of school.
I appreciate that. And if, I don't know if it's possible, but if you could maybe break it down that we would need X dollars if, worst-case scenario, we're not back in the fall or X dollars if we're looking at just a wash for the rest of this year and school is able to start as scheduled in the fall.
Right. And I think there are some things, we can do that. And I also think there are some things DPI can do. How much would it cost to provide devices for all teachers and students in the state, for example?
When you buy at that scale, you certainly get a much better price than if Guilford County tried to procure those items on our own.
Certainly. Thank you very much.
Reverend Quick?
First of all, Chairwoman Hayes and the other board members, thank you all very much for showing tremendous leadership in this area. I've been on several calls where Guilford County has been commended for being a leader from everything, from the way that we are feeding our kids to the way that we're making sure our kids are connected to the internet so that learning can continue. And so I just wanted to commend the board and certainly commend our superintendent for true leadership at this time. I'm going to have to log off in just a second. But I did want to ask a slightly unrelated question of the superintendent. High school seniors have had their year interrupted in a way that none of us could have imagined. I don't think any of us have personally gone through. I saw where Paige's principal had done a wonderful thing in going to make sure that he visited all of the high school seniors. What, if anything, are we doing to recognize that there's a definite impact on our high school seniors emotionally, socially? And just, you know, one of the kids at the church that I pastor said to her parents and her parents let me know, "I've worked 12 years for this and now it was taken away from me." So now, and I know you've heard similar things. So what is being done, if anything, for our high school seniors?
So the first thing we're trying to do is locate them. As I said, we've had more than 40,000 students who have not logged in yet. So we're trying to locate them, given the context that we're working under in Guilford County, where we're trying to keep staff members safe. We can't get into the homes in the way we would regularly do. But we are now working with the high school principals to plan events, even if they are virtual, for these students. We want to make sure that we celebrate them and then plan for, if we have to, December graduations. Because we want them to know, we do recognize that they worked hard for actually 13 years. They went to kindergarten. And we want to let everyone know how proud we are of our high school seniors and know it will not be exactly the same. But we have learned that you can have virtual Instagram parties. We've learned we can do graduations virtually right now until we can have the celebration. But we have every intention, as soon as this is over, to allow every student to cross that stage and shake the principal's hand, shake my hand, and shake the board member's hand. We are proud of how they are handling this and thank you for recognizing them.
Thank you all. Thank you, everybody, very much. I'm going to log off, but thank, again, the board. Thank you for your leadership. And Dr. Contreras, absolutely. Thank you for your tremendous leadership. You all have a great day. God bless you.
Superintendent Contreras?
Yes?
This is John Fairclough, if I may have a moment. I want to thank you and your staff for putting together what sounds like a very applicable attack at some of the problems that we have. What I would ask is that, on the information you are sending to us, I hope there's some indication of your perception of where dollars may be already appropriated that are addressing some of the problems you have and those that would need appropriation that would certainly help us insofar deliberation. And with respect to this meeting today, I would ask Senator Robinson to perhaps plan for us, the delegation, to get together again in about two weeks before April 28th and discuss what we've gone over today between ourselves. Thank you very much for what you've done. It's a great job.
Thank you so much. And certainly, you have been helpful with allowing flexibility in the use of funding. We ask that that continues. But we will seek to identify where funding exists. But some of these issues, I think, existed long before the pandemic and have just been exposed to a greater extent and will unfortunately require some new funding. And we will try to distinguish between the two. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions. Board Member Diane Bellamy Smalls wanted to know how quickly can these budget requests be responded to? And also thanking the district board and others for increased services to High Point.
I think she's asking the General Assembly.
Right. So Ash, and Michael, any others?
Do you understand the question?
How quickly can the budget request be responded to?
I can try to take a shot at it. I think it's going to depend on if we have a special session or not. If the governor calls us back, then we can handle it then. But if not, we'll have to wait till we come back on the 20th of April.
All right. Thank you, Cecil.
I'll just add that there is some discussion about what will be coming from the federal government and how that will be getting to school districts. But the time that that is going to take, so are there places where we know X amount of money is going to get funneled to GCS, for example, for a specific purpose, but they're not going to get it till July and you need it in April or early May? Is there a way we can help with that too? So I think Cecil's right as far as like actual passing new things. But I just wanted to add, I think that that's part of the conversation. So on the numbers you're making, if that factors in anywhere where you know or we expect certain to be coming through the Federal Cares Act, but you are going to need something from the state to get to the gap of when that comes through, I think that would be helpful too.
Thank you.
An additional question she's asking is, so how does the budget look today?
Whoops. There we go. Additional question she's asking is, how does the budget look today? Our budget look today? I think there's a little typo there.
Are you asking about the GCS budget, Ms. Bellamy Small?
Yes. I just, what does our budget look like? Because we're spending money, right?
Certainly. We're continuing to pay staff and order the supplies that are necessary that we need to have in place, as well as ordering additional devices with funds that are available. So because we are already in March, though, when this started and we were very close to our purchasing cutoff, we had spent a significant amount of our non-salary dollars. So we're still living within our budget right now. But we didn't have a lot of unspent dollars available to address these needs at this point.
I don't see any additional questions raised.
Okay. Well, my point is just simply that as we are asking our state legislators to request these budget concerns, that hopefully they understand that we don't have unlimited resources to continue to try to fund this to get through the rest of this year and to begin to plan for next year. So, I mean, I don't know who, you know, whose cowbell we need to ring, but we need to get somebody to understand, you know, where we are.
Thank you.
I'd like to say one more time, thank you to all of you. I know everyone is working hard. I wanted to thank the school board for their efforts. They have stayed in touch with me nearly on a daily basis and have been advocating. I want the public who is watching to know that those nine individuals that you elected have been advocating every single day for all of our children and not just our children, but the families for this entire community, for the well-being. I thank my executive team for the countless hours they have put forward in trying to make sure that we make the best out of the most complex situation I have faced in my nearly 30 years in public education. And certainly to all of the Guilford County staff, faculty, leadership, we thank you. We thank those who are still on the front lines. Our food service workers, our childcare workers, our bus drivers in transportation, the service workers. We owe you an incredible debt of gratitude for what you are doing to make sure that thousands of families eat per day. I even had teachers, I've been serving food as well. I've had teachers drive up with their children in the line who are having difficulty. So we thank you for what you are doing. And to the Guilford County community, I assure you, we will get through this together. There are lots of people putting their best thinking forward, not just with respect to education, but I see our county, our cities coming together, the state coming together to try to problem solve, to make sure that we come through this safely. So I thank all of you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. I couldn't say it better, Dr. Contreras, thanking you and the staff, my colleagues on the board who have just, everyone has just shown up, you know, bringing our absolute best to this unprecedented problem. I do want to say in closing that our community has, and we have a very large vulnerable community. Guilford County serves the majority of our students and their families meet the eligibility requirements for not just food assistance in our school system, but housing assistance, healthcare assistance. And the predictions, I think, from MIT back in 2017 that in order to get out of the sort of poverty, not even into the middle class, but to get out of poverty means that nothing needs to go wrong in your life for 20 years. After that research came out in 2017, 2018, our most vulnerable communities were hit with a tornado. And then two years later, we are here. Our best situated families lost decades of wealth building during the 2008 mortgage crisis. And so for our most vulnerable families, this is going to set us way back in regards to trying to capture where the progress we had made and to extend beyond that. And so we need to be thinking down the road what we are going to be facing when this is over, trying to help students get back on their feet and families get back on their feet. And so thank you, everyone, for all that people are doing to try to cover the gaps and to fill in the holes. But we definitely need to be thinking about what we're going to be facing as soon as we're out of this situation and then into our next crisis. So thank you, everybody. This wasn't so bad, you know? This was nice to be in touch and to feel like we got something done. The Legislative Committee has been working on this and reaching out and doing work behind the scenes that made all this possible. So this was pretty seamless. Nora, thank you and your staff, Dr. Contreras, our tech folks that are here that have been working with us. You know, this is, you know, this is a new normal. So thank you all. Is there a motion to adjourn? Diane Bellamy Smalls made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, just sign off.
Okay. Bye.
Bye-bye. Thank you.